Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is changes to the order of the agenda, and I would like everyone to be, to understand that our new business item tonight, which is a consideration of resolution regarding setting a minimum wage, is going to be tabled and that, or continued, rather, because we had requested an opinion from the FPPC on this item, and we had not heard from them by 5 o'clock today, so that necessitates continuing the item. All right, are there any other suggested changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, the first item we have is a presentation to, a proclamation to Benjamin Littman for receiving the Synopsys Science Award. Is Benjamin here? Hello? Is this on? Oh, it is. Hello, Benjamin. Well, congratulations. We are presenting you tonight with a proclamation, and you are the second-place winner of the 2019 Synopsys Science and Technology Championship. This is a Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair, and it annually holds what's called a Synopsys Championship, which showcases students who will become our future scientists, technology experts, engineers, and mathematicians, and thank goodness for people like you, because if the world were left up to me, we would have no science and technology. Anyway, what I'd like you to do, and let me just read one more thing here, it says, "They work independently or in teams to address questions in the fields of computer science, environmental science, medicine and health, chemistry, biology, and a half a dozen other categories." Congratulations, and I'm, as I said, thank goodness for people like yourself. Would you like to say a few words about your project?
Sure.
All right, well, here's the mic.
Thank you. So, my name's Ben Littman, and I'm a senior at Kiki La Jewish High School in Palo Alto, and I was born with a heart condition called aortic stenosis, and I've had two open-heart surgeries, most recently in the summer of 2018. And since the beginning of high school, I've developed a passion for computer science, just taking introductory courses in my freshman year, and so I wanted to use my love for computer science in order to give back to the field of cardiology. And so, the hypothesis of my research was that using a convolutional neural network, which is a machine learning algorithm, would be able to accurately diagnose cardiac arrhythmia. So cardiac arrhythmia is an irregularity in the heart's rhythm, and it's responsible for 15% to 20% of worldwide deaths. And cardiologists is needed to diagnose arrhythmia, and it's expected that in the coming years, demand for cardiologists is going to outgrow supply, and so having an automated way to diagnose arrhythmia is very important at this time. And so, using a convolutional neural network on over 100,000 individual heartbeats of 11 different categories, one being normal heartbeats and the rest being 10 different types of arrhythmia, I was able to achieve an overall accuracy of 99.06%. And so, the science fair led me to be very interested in this field, and I was able to continue my research in an internship at Stanford where I worked to diagnose a disease called Wolf-Parkinson-White Syndrome, which, and I'll be presenting my research at an upcoming professional cardiology conference.
Wow. Thank you, Benjamin. May I assume that these are your parents behind you?
This is my mom.
Hi.
Hi.
Great job. Yes, sir.
I'm with the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association.
Oh, terrific. All right, did, did you want to say a few words, or?
I would.
Okay? Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for considering. I want to thank the mayor and city council for considering this student. It is our mission as the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association is to encourage and motivate students to consider science, technology as a career option. I know you guys are responsible for the laws and codes and all of that, but someone has to implement them, and I would like to have those individuals like him who are considered at heart in terms of looking for the best in the community, the best options, they're safe, and they're beneficial to the community. We are a premier science fair organization. We sponsor sciences fair every year for all the county, Santa Clara County, they all have opportunity, all of the schools have an opportunity to present their science fairs at our annual science fair at the, in San Jose, we call it the Blue Building, but it's at the convention center in San Jose, and then we take those students from there to go to the state fair, and then take students to go to the World International Fair, and we compete at the international level. Seven, they are 80 countries are there, and we do well. I mean, they look to Silicon Valley as the leaders in terms of the future, so I want to thank you again, and we're really, really proud. These are the types of individuals that's gonna take over, and we see what the future's gonna be. You can see the future here, and you have the opportunity to mold and shape the future and see it right here by participating and supporting these youngsters, so thank you again, and thanks for your work.
Thank you very much. When I was a history major, oh, well, thank you again. on library services. Alexandria?
Hello. I was a bit nervous I was gonna go after that achievement. That was pretty incredible. And so, thank you for having me today. So, dear Mayor Collins and members of the city council, it is with pleasure that we present the San Mateo County Library's annual report for 2018-2019 fiscal year. The report shares wonderful evidence and impactful stories about the ways the library enriches the community through transformative experiences. Throughout the past year, the San Carlos Library welcomed over 290,000 patrons seeking access to resources and services ranging from storytimes and book clubs, drop-in computer help, and 3D printing, after-school teen hangouts, STEAM programming for all ages, encouraging intergenerational participation and learning. A programming highlight was our Pride Festival for youth, and it was celebrated for the first time throughout our 12 branches organized by San Carlos librarian Carmen Latona. Children enjoyed a Rainbow Pride Festival with Casey Levy, who's a local LGBTQ musician and artist. Face painting crafts and free books celebrating the rich history of LGBTQ figures such as Harvey Milk happened. From strengthening our partnerships with our local schools and community centers, the Hiller Aviation Museum and Industrial Arts Business Association, to participating in community events like Hometown Days and the Arts and Wine Festival, the San Carlos Library strives to be an active presence in our community, engaging and interacting with over 15,000 community members outside of the library this year as well. In collaboration with the Big Lift and San Mateo County Office of Education, San Carlos Library staff members Ricardo Buzo and Gary Ransford also served as CAM coaches in the San Mateo County Library's Big Lift Inspiring Summers. It's an enrichment camp focused on literacy, reducing summer learning loss, and engaging families to support both home and school learning in our underserved communities. The San Carlos Library is indebted to our many volunteers and to the friends of the San Carlos Library for their assistance in funding programs and outreach through their tremendous fundraising efforts. We look forward to another year of fueling the expansion of knowledge, experiences, and community engagement, and we are so thankful for your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alexandria. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a couple of questions, so, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ally. Welcome back. We're excited to have you back.
Yes, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say that the library is truly an anchor in our community, and it serves from babies to our seniors. It is so popular and so well-used, and so I want to thank you for all of your hard work and the friends of the library for their work raising money for our library. I just wanted to make the point that a few months ago, we had our Public Safety Power Shut-Off meeting, and we talked a lot as a community about looking at the library as a community resource center, and so I'm hoping that in the coming years, we kind of flesh out these discussions, that we can collaborate with the library, between the library and the city, and figure out some ideas moving forward. I'm also a member of the Library JPA Governing Board, and so I'm gonna bring this up at our next board meeting, too.
Thank you. I super appreciate it. It's definitely something that we want to make sure that we're there for our community as well, so I appreciate it.
Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Thank you so much for your presentation, really appreciate it. We've talked before, and I've shared with you that I come from a family that shares a love of books, and my first experience with the library was actually a book mobile, so that was really fun when I was a young kid. Just curious, you kind of bypassed this fact very quickly, but you said that you, the library here, served 290,000 visitors this past year. That's remarkable, and I would love to learn a little bit more about how you go about outreach and promoting what you have to offer to the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking that. So, the specific number was 293,336 patrons, and we really, it's important to us to be synonymous with San Carlos, so we want, when people think of the city, to think the library, and we want to just be part of that. And so, we've worked really hard to develop really positive relationships with the Parks and Rec Department here. Amy Newby has been incredible in allowing us to come and join in at events, so this year, we gotta add the Goblin Walk and Holiday Lights to our event panel that we do. We created a new partnership with Hiller where before, we would just have them come every now and then to help us out, and now we're trying to do monthly outreaches where we actually go to Hiller and set up at their big, you know, 5K runs or things like that. And then, we try to really bring the, how do I say, the arm candy, but it's our 3D printer and all the good stuff, so we try to set up a booth and have our 3D printing out, and that really starts the conversation with people to know that libraries are more than books. We have tons of books, and we love our books, but we also want people to know that they can find programs, they can find activities for all ages, if they just need a place to study, or if they just need a place to have fun, that we're that resource, and so that's just important to us to get onto the community, be at the farmer's market every month, and just be there. So if there's ever an event that you would like us at, or that you think of, please let us know. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Fabulous, thank you.
Okay, we are now gonna move on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes, and we do have about eight or nine cards, so I would, I will ask you to please keep your comments to two minutes. We do have a timer. When you see the yellow light on, you're, you've got about, I think about 20 seconds left, 30, something like that, so please try to wrap it up in that period of time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes, as I mentioned. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak, I may draw five speaker cards, but I don't think I'm gonna do it tonight, I'm just gonna call two at a time. Any item that you talk about, if it's not on the agenda, we're gonna, we have to maybe briefly respond to it, but we really can't discuss it, and we will refer it to, and we may refer it to the staff for further attention. Okay, so I've got the first two speakers, I'm gonna just call off the first two. The first speaker is Vimal Kapoor, followed by John Zay. Good evening, Mr. Kapoor.
Good evening. Gentlemen, I am here to touch upon a topic that has global significance and not just for the, you know, normal city routine functions, and, you know, the city has the best equipment, mic, and other things, but my message is not just meant for your ears, it is meant for your heart, right? And the ladies know best how to, you know, how much time it takes to reach the heart of a man, and at times, it may be the couples, you know, throughout their life, they may not touch each other's heart. So, why I'm telling the heart, because what I'm telling, you know, conveying to you is not something from my mind, it is not from my mind, it is come from, you know, intuition, and so it is something sacred, right? So, the age-old remedy for reaching the heart is the prayer, so I'm starting with two lines of a prayer. "May all prevailing God lead us from untruth to truth, from darkness to light, from death to immortality. May the mayor grant me time beyond rules by sitting back on his chair and not looking at the watch. Give me a time, because this is something, it doesn't happen. It may be in this chamber, this kind of a thing is being, you know, it is for the first time, and even I am mustering the courage to convey it truly. So, the exception you must make, right? Only one question, you just, you know, applauded a young chap. Now, how will you feel if one resident of the city wins gold medal in Olympic or say Nobel Prize in some field? You will be definitely proud of it. Higher power has prepared me for a specific task, and I am here to throw some light on the same. I can..."
Mr. Kapoor, could you wrap it up, please? Your two minutes are up.
Okay, I mean, if all that, what I mentioned, if finally the rules are the ones which tie down the, everything, then I have sent you a mail, I would, you know, request you to respond to that, but the rules, the change, are, becomes at times the change that we make for ourselves, so with all the, you know, love and this thing which I came, you are not, you know, responding to that, and, okay, time will tell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kapoor. Next, we have John Zay, followed by Gene Chasse.
Hi, my name is John Zay, and I'm here for a totally different reason. I'm trying to get the city to look into having a time limit ordinance for the construction projects in our city. I think many of you are familiar with the project across the street, but it's starting its fifth year, and it doesn't have a roof on it yet, and there's no way the city has really controlling this, other than if they get an inspection every 180 days, it just keeps going and going, and it's kind of gotten to where the developers are really doing what they want to do, as long as they stay within the state of California's boundaries. The city of Belmont has a restrictive program. They allow two years for a permit. It's based on the amount of money for the project, so it goes up to two years maximum. Beyond two years, you can get a 60-day, pardon me, a six-month extension for a fee. If you run out of the six months, you can get three 60-day extensions for additional fees, and then, I, to be honest with you, I don't know what happens beyond that. Hillsborough is also has a time limit, theirs is 30 months, and they have the same kind of thing. You can keep on going, if you want an extension, you pay a fee and go beyond that. I do not know their time limit either. I checked with Palo Alto. Palo Alto has a four-year extension, period, and if you are not on that project for 180 days, you lose your permit and start all over again. So, I'm looking into, I have a couple of things here, I'll leave them, that have showed what Hillsborough and Belmont have, and maybe we can get the city to look into this and do something about it, because some of these projects are just, in my eyes, out of control. So, that's about all I can say, and I'll leave these.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Thank you, Mr. Zay. Yes, Mark?
May I ask Mr. Rubens a quick question regarding the speaker?
Sure.
So, Greg, if, I wanted to see if there was interest in having the Planning Commission study this topic, can I say that now, or is that an agenda item?
No, that, that, actually, you could do that, because the Planning Commission is the first stop for potential ordinance to do this, because that's, that, those provisions reside in the zoning code, so everything has to start there.
Okay, then I'll, I'll just be brief and say that I've had, been in correspondence, not with Mr. Zay, but with a number of other people who have brought up similar points to me, and I personally would love to see our Planning Commission study this and look into it, and come back with, you know, if they think it's appropriate, with some recommendations. So, I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I don't know if there's other speakers on this topic, I mean, could we wait to hear the rest of the speakers, and then, I'm happy to talk about it after that, if that's okay?
Sure. Why don't we do that? Okay, next is Gene Chasse, right? Followed by Ken Kessel.
Hello, I'm basically saying the same thing to John just said, and I am motivated by what I see in the corridor between Laurel and Cedar, San Carlos Avenue and Arroyo. There seems to be a lot of planned development, and I'm watching what's happening on my street with the condominium that's being built on the corner of Cherry and Chestnut, that has been going on for over four years, and I have no idea when the permit was issued, but I see that it is, and we've, I've, we've attended meetings at the library with the city and with staff of that, VIV, and I don't feel that they're necessarily in a good situation of knowing what's happening with, on the ground there. They say things that are obviously not happening about crews working and what they're doing, but it is very disruptive to the neighbors, to see that going on all the time, you know, and crews parking in the very limited area where there's very little parking, if you have guests, there's no place for anybody to park, and to put up with that for a short period of time, I can understand, but that's been going on now for a long, long time. And I know they said it's gonna be at the end of the third quarter of this year, they'll be finished, but in reality, that's, I don't see that happening. Anyway, I just wanted to throw in my two cents worth first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chasse. Next is Ken Kessel.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and council members. I want to address the discussion you had a couple of weeks ago regarding a proposal to establish a wildfire and public safety fund. There was quite a buildup before the meeting with a nice article in the San Mateo Daily Journal, which made it look like you're listening to residents, you hear them, you're gonna move forward with some bold actions. I was suffering from a head cold at the time, so I had to watch it on TV, and I was really dismayed to see that you decided to table this discussion 4 to 1 vote. I don't know if you intended this, but this discussion about the mechanics of bringing up some projects here reflects poorly on the council and makes people think that you don't care, this is not a high priority. I mean, this doesn't sound like the same council that I heard last November that was so concerned about the power shutdowns. So, the reference to that councilman over it made to Fund 25 in the school district, that it was a fund, nobody knew what it was for, this was 20 years ago, whatever, that has no relevance to this situation. If we establish a fund, it's very transparent, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of projects that people will want to see from it, so I don't think that's relevant to the discussion. Now, the question is this, are we gonna wait till there's another incident, until there's another emergency, before we start the ball rolling, before we have an open discussion about this? One of the things I wanted to bring to the table tonight is something I just found out about. County of Sonoma has issued an RFP to do a complete wildfire community service plan revision with actionable items. It is very well-written and very well, in terms of content and what the results are expected. I've shown this to a few people and had amazing response. You could use this as a roadmap for what to do next, if you don't know what should come, maybe you could use some of that money, hire a consulting firm, identify the issues, and go from there. So, I have forwarded this information to the mayor, and I believe he will forward it to the rest of the council. I also have a copy I can leave with the staff. I do hope you take a look at it. I also hope that you separate from the budget discussions where things can be lost, especially during work retreats, a separate meeting to discuss public safety and wildfire issues. Let the public speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. You might want to leave that with the clerk, and she'll make sure everybody on the council gets a copy. Okay, next is Joseph Gazal, followed by Zenovi Fichenholz. Mr. Gazal?
Hello, my name is Joe Gazal. I'm here also to request that you consider an ordinance around putting time limits around construction. It's pretty clear to me that there is a lot more construction coming our way, way more than what we've seen in the last several years, certainly way more than I've seen the last 38 years that I've lived here in San Carlos. I think that the Cherry Street is a really bad example, but it's a pretty serious example, five years of construction. I was here at the Planning Commission meeting... I was here at the planning commission meeting a week or two ago, where they were talking about ViiV, the Dragonfly company, was talking about their next project, the Walnut Street project. And they—we asked—there were questions about this Cherry Street project. It's clear that they said their main two reasons were shortages of labor, as well as technology problems. And now, they're talking about this Walnut Street project using even newer and different technology. These developers are using San Carlos as a proving ground, as a testing ground for technology. We have to put some limits on at least timeframes for when they can get these projects done. It's totally inconvenient and unreasonable to expect neighbors to sit here for years while these projects are being done. I think, as was already mentioned, Belmont and several other cities have pretty reasonable measures to at least put some constraints on these construction projects. And again, I see way more coming down the pipe, and I would seriously, strongly urge you guys to consider something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gazal. Next up is Zanovi Fitzenholz. Did I get that right? Okay. Followed by Steve Divney.
I have two items. First item is the same. We have to put the limits on construction projects. We have flabbergasted thinking about the new upcoming projects by Dragonfly on Walnut and Street, and I don't even mention Black Mountain, because it will be a nightmare. So, obviously, planning commission has to think very hard and impose the limits. Not only imposing the limits, but also the fees for extension have to be have to be steep enough to discourage any automatic extensions. So, the other item, I want to applaud the city for encouraging, at least this is what I understand, encouraging the ADUs. And this is a very good move, in my opinion. This will be—that will help the housing situation in the city. Okay? However, I would appreciate if the guidelines for ADUs will be very, very well published, very clear, and easily reachable, okay? So, for ADUs. And the same limits should apply, construction limits for the ADUs as well. Okay? Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fitzenholz. Next speaker is Steve Divney, followed by Zane Galal.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm actually going to speak on Item 6A, if I could. It should have been reflected on that.
Yeah, I—yes, yes, you can. I apologize that your card said an item not on the agenda, so this is when we do it.
All right. Thank you.
We will—we'll come back to that. Okay. Next speaker is Zane Galal.
Hello, council, Mr. Mayor. I've spoken to—
Zane.
My name's Zane Galal. I go at Terre Haute Middle School, and people are constantly speaking up and down the street between the intersection between my street and Club Drive, and I think it's finally time to stop that. It may not seem like a major problem, but it definitely is. There are children, middle schoolers, seniors, and animals that all live on the same street. Now, kids constantly walk up and down Bayview at this particular intersection to get to school, and we have kids from Mariposa, Charter, TL, even Carlmont, that all walk up and down this. So, my idea to fix this problem is to get safety lights installed on the crosswalk itself. They'll work by UPRESABUN and OLEB, the particular crosswalk, to alert people that someone's crossing the street. I've personally had some experiences of people almost running into me multiple times while walking to school, and I'm sure I could find more experience. 52.9% pedestrian deaths are caused by cars speeding on crosswalks and hitting people. Now, a traffic study shows that 83.4% of cars actually slowed down at a light crosswalk, which is an improvement from non-light crosswalks. And there's—well, crossing guards there sometimes, but most of the time, they're not there after school. Sometimes, they're not there, and people are always in a rush to get somewhere else. Even—I have a quote directly from a crossing guard, somebody—a crossing guard said that people come up and down here really fast in speed and don't have a guard. Now, I feel like this particular intersection has been neglected, and people don't really care about whether it's there or not. People also sometimes will park in the middle of it, in which you'll have to go around the cars in the middle of the street, which is endangering the children of multiple schools. And if the crossing guard's there, and the people are still driving bad, speeding, it's even worse when the crossing guard's not there. A lot worse. That's pretty much all I have for now. I also—sorry, I also have a petition. I've gone almost—well, I've gone more than 40 signatures.
Okay.
And I've—yeah, that's pretty much it. Sorry.
Yeah, that's right. You want—to you want to give the petition to the city clerk?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Zane. Good job. I have a speaker card from a woman who actually does not care to speak, but she did want it known that she is in support of Mr. Zay's comment on our construction timeline. So, we will make sure that that's recorded. All right. All right. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on items not listed on tonight's agenda? Okay. So, we will move on to—
Mr. Mayor, before we move on—
Yes. Oh, I apologize. Yes, I wanted to add something too. So, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
No, I just want to see whether or not there's anybody else in the dais who's interested in having the planning commission research the topic of permit limits and come back with recommendations if they feel that's appropriate.
Yes, I did want to ask Jeff a question. Is there anything brewing or coming up with the planning commission regarding this? Are we looking at any ordinances or anything like that?
No, not specifically at this time, so referral to the planning commission would be appropriate.
Okay. All right. I think that's—
Well, I'm in favor of that, I think.
We have general agreement?
I agree with the speakers. I'd like to see that happen.
I absolutely agree. I think there's a lot of community concern around this issue, and having an ordinance with some teeth in it, I think, is much needed.
Okay.
And through the chair, I had on a different topic, but one brought up by Zane, actually. Wouldn't it be appropriate for us to—and Jeff, chime in if I've got—if I've got the wrong commission here, but wouldn't it be appropriate for TNC to look into this particular crosswalk situation and see whether or not it's something that we—there are things that we can do there?
I was going to ask the same thing. That was going to be my exact request, yes.
Sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm glad you mentioned it.
I'd also like to know if that intersection is included in our bike and pedestrian master plan.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. All right. We will move on. We are now at Item 6. This is council member comments, report on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Why don't we start with Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have something that falls under council communications. Last Tuesday, the planning commission held a public hearing for a request to allow a Harley-Davidson sales and repair facility at 835 East San Carlos Avenue. And I watched the video of the meeting in its entirety, all four and a half hours, and my hat really goes off to our planning commissioners. I thought they really did a great job, asking some really wonderful questions. They clearly did their homework. They had a great discussion very late into the night. But at the meeting, several members of our East Side Neighborhood Association stood up to voice some pretty significant concerns about the project, and I want to make sure that those concerns are taken into account during this process, and I want to make sure that we get this process and this project right. So, to be clear, I understand from the planning commission meeting that the Harley-Davidson repair facility already complies with our current zoning, and I'm not here to request that we consider denying the project. What I am requesting is that we pull up the project for consideration of the event side of the project, as the applicant is requesting the ability to host parties on Thursday night sending at 9:00 PM. And I am very concerned about the noise generated from these nighttime parties and events affecting our neighbors who are about one block away. So, I'd like to propose tonight that we bring this up at a future council meeting for discussion.
All right. Before we go any further, I originally was under the impression that the speakers that want to speak on this item were going to talk at public comment, but since they have specifically said that they want to speak, at this time, I'm asking Greg, is it appropriate that we take public comment now before we go any further with with council comments?
Well, I think it'd be appropriate, since they waited till this point in the agenda, and once the subject was brought up. So, I think it'd be a good idea to invite the public to talk, and then—I can talk to the council about what I think—the how the code works with such a request, and then you can deliberate on the procedural aspects of this.
Okay. So, why don't we pause in wherever we're going with this? And here, we have two—I have two speaker cards. Mr. Divney, I had called you first. Would you like to come up and speak first, and we'll hear from Don Mancini after you?
Thank you. Pardon. I just wanted to bring to attention a communication I had with Scott Marsters this afternoon, because it was a good hearing last Tuesday night. Our matter went about one and a half hours of that four-hour-plus meeting, and three members of the East Side spoke, including Scott. Oh, four members. Caroline Tudor, Dmitri Vandelos, and his wife. They had, as I'm sure you're aware, a number of concerns that were brought up. So, I wanted to make sure after that we had our meeting and the 5-0 vote, and the compromises that were put in place, and the additional code compliance edits that were done to reflect some of the commission's pointed questions and conditions, that I checked back in with Mr. Marsters and/or Dmitri to see how they were doing. So, I did that this afternoon, and I said, "Are you guys good with this compromise? Do you plan on appealing?" And Scott said, "No, we got some compromises, and as Dmitri said, it's not the perfect world, but it's not worth fighting over, because we got some good compromises in place." So, I thought this data would be relevant to any potential discussion here, and Scott asked that I—since neither he nor Dmitri could make it tonight, that I voiced that so that council members could hear it. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next, Don Mancini.
Thank you. Good evening. As many of you know, I'm a 36-year resident, owned a business here in town for almost 30 years, and this is my community, and I don't want to put anything in my building that is going to cause a problem to the residents. And that's why we—as you—as you heard, we had a great meeting and a lot of questions and answers. I think at the end, the dealer was here. He—these seven events that go on during the year go on at all his dealerships, and there are two hotels on each side of one of them that he doesn't have any issues with. And I think the stopgap that we came to amongst a number of concessions was that if there was a problem, we would come right back to the planning commission. So, that made me feel good that there wouldn't be an issue if somebody felt like this thing wasn't going the way they needed it to. So, I just wanted to say thank you and hope that you guys will allow this to go the way it was done at the planning commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Before we go any further, I—because I've got a couple of lights on. Actually, Laura's went off. Mark, did you want to talk about this, or did you have another comment unrelated to this?
Actually, both, but I'm happy to defer the comment I might want to make about this one until after you finish whatever you're going to say.
Thank you. So, I have been advised that since this is an item that has been called up to us, that we actually need a formal vote. We have a motion so far. It will require a second. We cannot really discuss the item. We can ask some questions of staff. So, what I'd like to ask at this point is if there—if the motion wants to be changed, or if not, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Greg, can you just give us sort of the history of exactly what the planning commission did?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I was at the meeting last Tuesday. What the planning commission did at the meeting was to approve an amendment to an existing use permit at this site that would allow motorcycle sales on the on the location and some other events that were that were mentioned by by the public commenters. Under the city code, under Chapter 18.27.150E, the city council, by a vote of three, can call up a matter that's been considered by the planning commission for review. So, the what you're doing tonight procedurally is simply calling something up for review, and you're—you know, because we've talked about—I've talked about this before. This is since it came out of the planning commission, it's a quasi-judicial matter. So, we can't really talk about it tonight, because you haven't seen the record, but that basically you would be calling for review what the planning commission did in approving the amendment to the use permit.
Okay. Thank you. So, as I understand it, we have a motion and a second. There's—we're not really allowed to discuss this any further than that, is that correct? Except if there are any members of the council that want to ask questions of staff.
Their questions are okay about what the planning commission did and the procedurally what we're doing.
All right. Mark, I sent you have a question.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ron. So, my question is—and it's driven—I'm just speaking here for myself. It's driven in part by this issue surfaced for me just today, okay? And so, I have not had a chance to study in depth what the planning commission did. So, I actually am kind of—it frankly, I'm not sure I would even want to, in my state of ignorance, take a position yet on whether I want to call up the item, because I haven't studied it. So, can we consider this issue of bringing it up at a future meeting, or what's the what's the timing here?
No, no, we can't consider it at a future meeting, because the code section that I referred to requires the call-up to occur within 10 days of the decision. So, tonight is the only opportunity you have to call something up if you decide to do it. I mean, that's the way the code's written. I might add, procedurally, what that does, it's the equivalent of an appeal. It's the same time period as an appeal. It's just the council using its powers under the code to essentially appeal something. So, once the council—if the council were to vote to call something up, then the council at the next meeting is going to have to set the hearing on the appeal, and that has to happen within 45 days. So, it sets—it sets in motion a process for what amounts to an appeal, but it's called up by the council.
So, let me make sure—I am then in a position of having to decide whether I want to call something up, knowing basically nothing about it?
Well, other than what the planning commission did, which—and then the issue that was brought up about—
Sorry, I shouldn't have said nothing. What I meant is, other than knowing what the outcome was, I don't know any of the context, because I haven't—okay. I suppose, would it not be possible to deal with my concern about making a decision without information? Can we schedule—could we schedule like a special council meeting in 48 hours so that I could spend the next 48 hours going back and looking at the—you know, looking at the records, so I could at least be better informed?
There's two—it—the code only says that that call-up must happen within 10 days. So, you could call a special meeting, which requires 24-hour notice to further decide that, but it would have to happen within that 10-day timeframe. So, I guess it was—the meeting was the 21st, so we would have to do it by Friday. And the—the—that would require us to put a notice out by Thursday and generate the staff reports, but we don't have to generate a staff report necessarily— And the, that would require us to put a notice out by Thursday and generate the staff reports. But we don't have to generate a staff report necessarily if the council, because there's actually a planning commission staff report. But the decision you're making really is whether or not, since it's like an appeal, you're reviewing the decision in its entirety. So I think it's really just a question of, do you think it's appropriate to review something that the planning commission decided or based upon your understanding, and I understand the conundrum you're in, but based on your understanding whether or not to go forward? I mean, I could, I could go probably from a staff level, since I was there, and answer any questions you had about maybe what the planning commission's thinking was because I was there. I mean, we actually changed the proposed amendment to the use permit based upon some of the responses. So I can respond to that type of question, it's just that you can't deliberate on it.
Okay. So if my colleagues will bear with me for a second, just have one final question. As far as having staff explain more about what happened there, if others want to ask that, that's fine. I don't want to burn up people's time. But am I allowed to explain tonight at this vote, before we vote, what my thinking is behind my vote or is that considered discussion of the item?
No, you can, you could describe the reasons for your vote, yes.
Okay. Then I will do that before we get to the vote. Thank you.
Adam, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Collins. So Greg has had, I think, two questions. One, so just so I don't get clarification, when you talk about the appeal, it's appealing the whole project or just that conditional use permit for the events?
Well, the code considers it like an appeal. So it's an appeal of the whole item, but the mover of the motion was more, was concerned about one aspect of it. So I think that if it does get called up, we would focus on that, but technically it's an appeal of the whole item.
Okay. And can you just clarify for me then, just one of the actions by the planning commission with regards to the permit? Does that permit need to be renewed, the conditional permit for the parties on an annual basis or is that sort of done as part of the overall permit process and doesn't have to come up again?
The, I can't remember the exact language in that, but let me see if I can pull it up here. Lisa was there too. Okay, here we have a copy of it. So what we don't have, the language of the amended use permit that the planning commission approved says the planning commission reserves the right to review this conditional use permit and modify the condition should there be an unresolved noise or circulation complaints or a violation of the conditions of approval as determined by the community development director. So we've incorporated as a condition of approval in the permit. If something comes up, there's, the planning commission can look at it again and impose new conditions at that level.
All right. Mark, you had one last question?
Actually, Ron, I think that answer just answered my question. Well, I mean, were there any other conditions that were imposed by the planning commission? And again, I apologize, I just, I did not have a chance to study this.
There's two others that I recall that I think were the most significant with regard to the noise. The proposal had that the events would go on until 9:00 PM and the planning commission restricted the food and food service and beverages must end at 8:30 so that the event kind of starts to wind down was the thinking. And the other was that the live entertainment that they were proposing for the events would be, it would have to be located at the rear of the building between the US 101 freeway and the building. So it'll be the furthest location from the residential neighborhood.
So we have a motion and a second. Greg, I understand that we can talk about, we can explain why we're voting the way we are.
Yes.
Is this, I don't know that this will happen, but if a council member wanted to make a different motion, is this the time to do it?
This would be the time to amend a motion, to create an alternate motion for how you want to go forward with the review.
Okay. And the only reason I bring that up is that, Mark, I just kind of had the feeling that you might be thinking about a possible alternate motion. If I was, if I did not interpret that correctly, please let me know.
I'm afraid your mind-reading abilities have finally failed you in this one instance.
It's finally failed me. That's good, that's good to know. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Is anyone feel compelled to explain why they're voting and anything else? Mark?
Mayor Collins, could I ask if we take a five-minute recess?
I suppose, sure. Five minutes, we'll come back at 7:58.
Unfortunately, we need to pull the whole project back if we pull, if we pull this up for discussion. You mentioned a public hearing that is involved, is that, can we discuss this in two weeks or is there kind of a long, drawn-out process of...
Well, we just need to set, I don't know what the, how we can get ready, but I mean, we could get it ready pretty quickly for you because, I mean, it's a similar issue. The time limit is just 45 days, so whenever you want to set it for the appeal, we can do that. And I think you probably can't, I don't see in the ordinance where you said it says the city clerk sets it, so the, we could just, with that general direction, we could bring it back as quickly as possible.
And it would come back at a regular city council meeting or a special meeting?
It could be brought back at a regular meeting.
At a regular meeting, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I assume that the motion is still on the table, we have a second. This is your opportunity to explain your votes and I will open for comments here. Mark, your light is on first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand, I believe, the concern that's behind the request that we pull this item up. And when I first heard about this this afternoon, I have to admit, I was struck by sort of, I have many, many times over the course of my tenure on the council, basically said, more discussion is better than less. And so I am in general in favor of having more discussion rather than less, even if the end result of it is that I, for example, in this case, were to decide that I was okay with the planning commission decision. But I'm going to vote against this proposal because frankly, as you probably sensed from my questions with Greg, I'm in the awkward position of having to decide whether or not I wish to potentially overrule the planning commission without knowing much about exactly what they did. I appreciate staff's explanation of stuff, but there's a difference between an explanation and going and watching the entire event and having a chance to talk to people and think about it and talk to staff ahead of time and whatnot. So I guess I'm sort of breaking my normal practice and it's solely because this is coming up out of the blue. So I'm going to vote against this, not because I don't understand the concern, but just because I honestly don't know whether or not I feel, whether or not I have a sense of, would I actually be willing to overrule the planning commission? And the one other time, I'm almost done, sorry. The one other time that I've been on the council where we did call up an item and that had to do with the Carlos Club expansion a number of years ago, the facts in that situation were different and by the time the planning commission had decided, through conversations with staff and other sources of information, I was pretty well-versed in what the issues were. So I knew in general where I was coming from on that. This one's very different because it's literally out of the blue for me. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Thank you. Adam?
Thanks. I just want to be clear that I don't oppose the project in general. I think it's a, you know, I'm happy to support the project as a whole and I think I just have some concerns about the noise effect and would love to get, you know, I would have been happier, I think, if the planning commission had come up with a one-year review and then take a look at it and have some impact study, understand kind of what the impact was versus sort of a, to me, a little bit more ad hoc approach to it. So I'm going to vote yes on this and I think it's worth taking a look at again. I hope we can make this, do this expeditiously and get the whole project approved. It's just this one piece that I have some concern about. And I appreciate all the work by the planning commission and all the questions and Mr. Divney coming up and Ms. Mancini to talk about their perspective.
Thank you, Adam. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. So my perspective on this is, you know, the planning commission is a group of entrusted officials who we put our faith in to do good works. And from what I've heard this evening, it sounds as if there have been multiple compromises made, collaboration. And so thank you, Lisa, for bringing that forward to help us better understand that. And I don't want to be in the position of undermining that body, so I am leaning towards a no vote this evening on this motion.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see your light on. I assume that there's nothing you wish to add? Okay. And I will just add that I was sort of on the fence before tonight, but hearing that some of the most concerned residents have had their concerns dealt with and ameliorated and they're okay with it, that sounds to me like they should, or that we should move forward. A 5-0 vote tells me that the planning commission had, you know, that they did their job, that they got the owner to make some changes that are friendly to the community and that still allow them to operate their enterprise. So having said that, Crystal, you want to call the vote?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Councilmember Palmer-Lohan?
No.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
No.
Okay. We're going to move on to the consent calendar.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I had some council communications that had nothing to do with...
I apologize, yes, we are still on council communications. I forgot. There's more than just this one item, so, yes, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was a good discussion. So I had, let's see, one, two, three, three items tonight, one of which has a couple of parts to it. So let me try and be quick here. I served as the council's representative on Silicon Valley Clean Water Oversight Board. I mentioned at our last meeting that they were closing in on a year of accident-free work at the site, which is wonderful, not only because of the site is a complex operating environment, but also in the midst of a billion-dollar retrofit and modernization program, which complicates it even further. And I'm pleased to say that they are now into their second year. So, you know, I didn't jinx it, so I think they're a year and nine days or something. So I hope you'll join me in congratulating them for that and, you know, wish them continued success in maintaining a safe working environment. Two other things regarding Silicon Valley Clean Water, more on a policy level, and I discussed how to do this with Greg before the meeting, so bear with me. There are two things that came up where one had to do with whether or not the JPA, Silicon Valley Clean Water, ought to act in setting its rates, that it charges a member agencies in such a way that it smooths out costs, as opposed to letting each member agency smooth them out individually, which is what San Carlos and the other cities have done to date. That came up in discussion and my philosophy is that I would rather the smoothing, if we do any smoothing at all, be done in San Carlos and in each of the communities. But I bring it to your attention because I know this is a topic of great interest to most electeds and if you feel differently about that, I would encourage you to ask that we have a discussion about Silicon Valley Clean Water policy so that I can have guidance on it. I don't want to impose my views on the council, but, you know, if you're fine with that, that's fine. Similarly, excuse me, there's been some discussion at Silicon Valley Clean Water because as they gear up and borrow money to do their program, there are periods of time when the money is borrowed before the expenditures take place, so they have the money parked in an investment pool. They wish to modernize their investment policy, still be extremely safe, but to look at considering investing in certain classes of investments that are allowed by the state, in fact, they're very strictly allowed by the state, but that go beyond what San Carlos typically does. And personally, I have no problem with that. I think it's actually good business practice for them to be doing what they're doing. But once again, if any of my colleagues feel that we should discuss that or you would like different advice being given on behalf of this council, please ask that we agendize a discussion of Silicon Valley Clean Water investment policy so I can be guided by that. I also like to tell the community that, or share with the community that we've gotten our, I guess it's biannual Public Records Act request from the National Rifle Association, asking for all communications that any of us and city staff have had with various agencies. I will be complying with that. I hope they enjoy some of the interesting letters I received when we were discussing gun store regulation. And I also hope that they enjoy receiving or seeing the communication that I got from a gentleman by the name of Jeff Obert, who I guess must be related to me, but I have no idea how, who lives in Oklahoma, who so far was the only person who's ever sent me a letter that I actually had to refer to the sheriff's department to react to, which they took care of for me. And lastly, and again, I apologize for the length here, lastly, this is an election year. Both Ron's and my position are up for election this November. The school board, I don't know if they still do this, but for many years, the school board held a open meeting that anybody who was interested in running for the board could come to and ask questions about what's involved with it, what's involved with being a board member, how do you do things, et cetera, et cetera. I'd actually like to see the council do something like that, if my colleagues are interested in it, and if so, we'll put it through the agenda-setting process. I'm not visualizing that it would be like a special meeting or anything. It'd be sort of a, we'd probably have to post it as a meeting, but it'd be a pretty informal environment. But I just feel that as a matter of sort of transparency and whatnot, we all have a lot of information and knowledge about what's involved with running for office and being a council member and sharing that with people who might be willing to run to represent the community, I think is a good thing. So that's the totality of my comments.
All right. So you'd like to have, put this on an agenda to just talk about how we might put together some sort of a public forum?
Yeah, yeah. A casual, a casual public forum.
All right. I think that's not a bad idea. Is anybody else?
I think it's a great idea.
Want to see that happen?
Experience with the school board, I think it was a good, good way to get the community involved and let them sort of understand what it takes.
They still do that?
I believe they still do that.
Okay, yeah. I mean, so they've been doing it for about a decade now, so I think it's a pretty good idea.
Okay. So that will be a future agenda item, or at least that'll be an agenda item to talk about, creating an agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's the way we work now. Adam?
I just had, turn that back on. One comment. I attended the Office of Emergency Services quarterly meeting last week and I'm going to, had some great presentations, particularly around, one presentation with CAL FIRE and what the county is doing around some mapping, some interactive mapping they've done around zones and evacuation throughout the county. So they have 300 zones created throughout the county that they can pinpoint where they might need to do specific evacuations, be able to, you know, interact on the map with law enforcement and fire and things. And I'm going to hopefully ask if we can get, potentially if the council's open to it, a presentation by CAL FIRE on kind of some of the work that they've been doing around this. I think it would be useful to inform our discussions moving forward.
All right. So a presentation by CAL FIRE at some future time?
Yes.
All right. Everybody like that?
I would welcome that.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. So I sit on the Board of Peninsula Clean Energy and attended the board meeting last week. And at that meeting, we, the board approved a resolution for $10 million for resilience, specifically around PG&E's power shutdown. And what was notable about the program that was presented is that it did have a number of elements that were suggested by community and council during our special hearing. So I would encourage San Carlos city staff to follow up with that agency to better understand what those programs are and how we might be able to leverage them for our community. So, and it was a unanimous yes by all sitting board members, so it's good.
Okay. Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I did something that I don't normally do and I did it solely at the invitation of our president of our, excuse me, our superintendent. I went to a San Carlos School District budget review and I have to say that Dr. Hermeier did an outstanding job. I was only able to stay for part of it, but anybody who's been reading anything in the news knows that the school district has a lot of financial challenges out there and they've had some recent bumps in the road. So I was happy to attend that and I think that the district is doing everything they can to manage their budget issues. The second thing I wanted to report out on is that I had a meeting, it was sort of, it was an inform- a, it was an informal special meeting with our state, county, and local and public safety officials, all on wildfire evacuation routes. It was on the 17th, I believe, here at City Hall. It was an informal meeting, and it was nice to be able to talk with representatives from our state assemblyman and state senator's office, our two of our supervisors, Belmont's mayor, and our police chief, our fire chief, and a representative from CAL FIRE. So it was a big, it was a full room. And Jeff Maltby was there, too, and I really, I think that we made some progress, and hopefully the issue of wildfire evacuation will be something that we'll make some progress on when we address the entire wildfire safety issue. Okay, that's all I have. If there's nothing else, we will move on to item seven, consent calendar. These are motions, or items that are all considered in a single motion. Is there anybody that wants to pull any item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item I, please.
All right. Motion to pull item I, all right. And then we need a motion to approve the rest of the items.
I move to approve city council consent calendar items A through H.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve items A through H. Okay. Crystal?
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Well, since our new business item has been continued, let's deal with that item 7I right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. This has to do with directing staff to work with the San Carlos Sister Cities Association to consider establishing a sister-city relationship with Middlebury, Vermont. And I'm just trying to understand how, why we're pursuing this, I guess. I'm looking for a little guidance on, you know, how, what our bar is for choosing a city to be a sister-city with. I participated in a sister-city program when I was a teenager, and it was in Mexico. And I have always been under the impression that you would choose a city in another country so that you have kind of that cultural exchange. You look for a city that you have something in common with, a similar population. So I just wanted to get a little background on why we're considering Middlebury, especially if we're directing staff to be working on this.
Do we, was that a question for staff?
Yeah, however this was chosen.
Can I perhaps shed some light on it? Just because I was the one that threw this into the pot at our last meeting. As I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Tom Davids had indicated that the San Carlos Sister Cities organization had thought about in the past establishing such a relationship with a city within the United States, just to answer part of the question. I seem to recall him saying that. So, and I don't have personal knowledge of that, but to the extent that that's correct, then that would, you know, be at least that that organization is open to considering something like that. The rest of it, I have to admit, I, as I hope I made clear when I first brought this up, this came to me when I was chair of the council from an individual who currently lives in Middlebury and was a San Carlos resident, and it was a suggestion based on that sort of experience. So I don't have more than that to add, but that's, hopefully fleshes out at least a little bit of what I know, and if staff has other stuff to add in.
Yeah, no, that's what I was going to say. This item did not come from the staff. It was placed on the agenda at the request of a council member at, I believe, our last meeting for consideration of being an agenda item. And then the council also asked that it be brought forward as a consent calendar at the last meeting, and that's been our involvement with this particular issue.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none? Well, I would entertain a motion on this. I assume we have to have a motion on it.
I move to adopt city council consent calendar item I.
Second.
And there's a second? Any other discussion? Adam?
I just had one quick comment, maybe perhaps if we can include that as part of the, if it's germane to do that, just to understand the, I just love to understand the criteria around, sort of, if there is some sort of set formula or criteria so that we have that process in place, because I, I'm supportive, I'm going to support the motion, but I just worry that we get into a situation where anybody can come up and say, well, this should be a sister-city. So I'd just like to understand and have some criteria in place as part of this process.
All right. So that was just a general suggestion on your part?
General suggestion as part of this, as we start doing this, that we're not just sort of going to have random cities come up and be requested.
All right. All right. We have a, oh, we've got a couple more lights on. Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to explain, I'm going to vote no on this because we don't have criteria, and I don't really want to set a precedent that someone can just move somewhere and then request that we become sister-cities with their new town. So, again, I really enjoy the sister-cities program. I've been a beneficiary. I think it's really valuable, but I'm just still not really understanding why this city, and I'm not comfortable with devoting staff time to this in the absence of more clear criteria for how we're going about this.
Okay. Laura?
Yeah, I guess, so, and this may be, I may be backing up to a question, but it was my understanding from the last discussion that this wouldn't necessarily be much staff time involved, in fact, that this would be turfed over to Tom Davids and that group if I'm understanding correctly. Is that correct?
As I recall, that was the discussion that the council had at their last meeting.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote. Crystal?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
No.
Okay. So I think we're done with the consent calendar. The new business item has been continued, so we're at item nine, additional council communications and announcements. Are any other reflections by my fellow council members? Sarah?
I have a lot to say tonight, apparently. I wanted to say a big thank you to all the volunteers who worked on the Week of the Family. I think it was a wonderful event for our community. My family participated in Family Game Night and the Day of Service, and I know that it's very popular and it's very special to San Carlos, and I wanted to thank everyone for participating and volunteering and all the hard work. And also, I wanted to just let the community know that we have a striping project that's getting worked on as we speak. The intersection of Poly Street and Industrial will be striped later this week, which will be a huge improvement to that intersection, and I received public comment on that, so I want to put that out there. Also, Howard Avenue and Melandie are going to be restriped this week, so please be aware that there could be some delays on those roads.
Okay. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Just super quick. I will be traveling for the next meeting, so I'm going to be absent at the next council meeting. Just want to let you know that I'll be out of town and unable to attend.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I'd just like to ask that we schedule some time at the next meeting to shift council assignments.
Yes. I was thinking exactly that. And I'll just close with, I forgot to mention, Week of the Family, I think, Sarah, you mentioned the Week of the Family. Part of the Week of the Family is a thing called Trivia Night, and it was held at Domenico's Friday night. I was supposed to go, but I was home with a bad cold, so I was informed that because I couldn't go, I'm the sports guy on the team, and my wife informed me that we lost badly. But the night was a big success. I think there were at least 50 people there, and so Trivia Night is really, I think it's the third year in a row, and it's become really a good, a great part of, of Week of the Family, something just for adults, for the change. Okay. Any comments by staff on city administrative business?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the city council, I would like to remind and invite the community to attend our second Home for All Community Meeting, which is being held this Saturday, February the 1st, at the San Carlos Adult Community Center. Will be an informative dialogue about people's personal experience with housing and their goals and aspirations for the future of San Carlos, around housing issues, micro and macro. Doors will be open at 9:30 AM, and the program will start at 10:00 AM. Breakfast will be provided, and childcare is available upon request. Because we want this conversation to focus on community perspectives, city staff and elected officials will be present, but only as spectators and observers of the conversation. And we hope that the community can join us this Saturday, February 1st, at 9:30 AM at the San Carlos Adult Community Center to talk about housing and the future of housing in the city of San Carlos.
Thank you, Jeff. And with that, we are adjourned.